Recording?
Recording.
This is a call to meeting to order. This is a meeting in the Hampton Board of Selectmen, August 24th, 2027 PM. Meeting is being conducted remotely using video conferencing technology as provided by Governor Baker's Order of March 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My delegation to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We don't want to get into that.
No. Is anyone else here recording other than us? Seeing none, we'll begin. The first item on the agenda is Marcus Communications, Representative Bruce Marcus here, Bruce Marcus, and CFO Mike Bula from my over here, to bring us up to date on where we are with our communications, police and fire communications. I have to say, before we begin, that... Hold on, I'll tell you in a minute what I have to say, that Mr. Butler, Mr. Butler, he had sent an email when I asked about the meeting, saying apparently he doesn't understand all the coordination that goes into this type of work. I assume he was referring to me. I probably don't understand all the coordination, but I don't have to because I'm paying $500,000. The town's paying $500,000 for you guys to figure that out. My concern is getting it done properly so that we have our communication systems in effect as soon as possible because again, we had a storm. The generator was running out of gasoline. They had to cut their way to the top of the mountain to fill it up. And we've numerous times, both the police and fire department have told us that, you know, we're on the verge of collapse at any time. So I'd like you to bring us up to date to where we are.
All the subscriber equipment has been installed.
You mean the radios and the vehicles?
All the vehicles, all the portables, all the infra- all that infrastructure has been installed. The console of the PD has been replaced and installed. The big holdup is out of our hands. And the town was taking on the task originally of dealing with SBA.
The tower owner.
The tower owners. SBA manages the two towers for the primary to this system functioning. You have to make application to SBA. You have to pay them engineering fees upfront, $2,000. Even though the town is getting space for free.
From Verizon.
No, not Verizon from the SBA people. They're not paying for rent on the towers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dollars.
But in the shelters.
In the shelters, okay. There's two things going on. So the town attempted as part of the contract, they were supposed to contact SBA and do the paperwork. It became too onerous for the town. We took it over. It's not part of our contract.
It was a nice town offer. It's typically too difficult for a town to do. This is very hard to deal with those people.
They said they would do it expedite.
They don't rush for a town because the town's coming onto their site for free, going to the shelters for free. They, you know, they don't work against you, but they certainly don't.
They don't speed it up. So it's a typical six-month thing to deal with the tower owners. That's classic. The towers are those major tower guys. So it's in the final process of their engineering review, check it off. This week, they ask the town for all the frequencies that are being used on the site. We don't have any good cellular. They have to check compatibility. They're doing that. Once they authorize that, then we can assign the work to our tower crew that is going to put the antennas on the tower. But everything passes there.
Yeah, but to reiterate, their process is slow and onerous. We do our best. The minute we get an ask, ask the question, we respond to it. But then, you know, that process started in what? The town's looking on in about February when it's March COVID hit. We basically got no response out of, out of the tower people for months, right? Most April, May, there wasn't a lot of movement there. They got backed out to get it doing again. We had things moving along, but those processes are, I can see where on the town side, it seemed like nothing's going on. Even though, like Bruce said, we did, we didn't release all the radios and dispatch center. But when it comes to the tower sites, I can, you can certainly see from the outside world, if you're not involved in it every day, how it would look slow. But unfortunately, we're all victims to that.
But complicated, the town has permission or getting permission to get into the shelters for free. Now shelters typically cost $70,000 to $90,000 to put on a site. We had to do it for you. That's what our costs would be. So Verizon is going to give you space and power. However, as it has to happen here, two Verizon field engineers that are responsible for the two towers in your town, not one guy, it's two guys, two different guys are assigned. They split the town down the middle in two different guys' districts. So we had to meet with two different people and made arrangements to meet with them. They said yes. Now the 20-page contract is with the town attorney. It's a zero-cost contract. She's, Rose is reviewing it, and she has to get it signed and back, and then I'll take care of that part.
No, excuse me for interrupting. And Rose has gotten that back to us? You have it here?
There are comments that are associated with that in the chain of emails that you are copying on. You, Mary Ellen and John don't have a copy of the documents themselves, but the comments that Rose has alerted us to, to watch out for and make decisions about whatever.
And we go through the contract, which is like I'm saying, there, it's typical, it's a lot of, lot of information, but they, you know, they typically, what they put in there is what they typically do when they allow a town on the site. We just look at it too. But you can see, you know, those 20, it takes a long time for them to put together that contract.
So as soon as they release both things, we get our tower riggers on the schedule. We get the antennas here because we have to wait for SBA's approval that they approve the antennas to be selected. We're not going to bring them in until the check mark goes on because we'd foolhardy for bringing, you know, $20,000 worth of antennas in it and say, oh, you know what? We won't allow you to put this one here. There was a problem on one of the towers is that the carrier, you know how they normally, the monopoles have a space at the top? You can add another piece on. Well, somebody decided they're going to put the amplifiers for these new 5G, 3G and 5G services up against that so there's no place to mount to. So that's in the discussion right now is where do you mount? Because they have to give, we can't go on the cell carriers platform because they're paying for that space. So that's in the little justic position negotiation on one of the towers. But once that's cleared and we have a place to mount something, we can get the riggers and then we can do that.
Now that, what happens then is the two tower sites, the two SBA sites get worked on. That'll be during September. We'll, September and October, we'll get a lot of the equipment in when we finally get sign off and everything from the, from the tower owners. We build everything in our shop. Then we have to coordinate the climbers. Now the weather starts to not, you know, cooperate with us. So that's, that's where the, the contracts, the, the schedule starts to stretch out a little bit. Because if you have a week in November, you hope to get what, three days to climb out of five? And then you go into the holidays. We filled those in. And then, of course, once the two sites are built, the, then the pole has to be worked on, right?
Pole will be last.
Yes, we, because that's the active site.
That's the active site. And the active site is the one up the black, up on a hill for blacks. So once we get these two up, that'll replace the covers that's now the town's getting from the other sites. So the big problem is not in our control. The big problem is in SBA's control. And once they clear that hurdle, then we can move forward. We're ready to move forward. We've done everything we can except go through that.
Proactively ordered equipment, which we normally wouldn't have done yet, but because of COVID and delays, we're trying to be really proactive on things, but.
So is, is this accurate that you, best case scenario, March 1st, 2021?
I would say that's, that's not the best case. I would say the best case could be a little bit better, right? If we get cooperation on good weather.
We're going to do the best we can as fast as we can, but we have to.
That's a conservative estimate.
Conservative, more than conservative.
Yeah, we're, we're much, we're hoping, let me tell you, time is money for all of us, right? We'd rather it be done much sooner. We can get it done sooner. Trust me, we're going to get it done sooner.
We don't get paid because we get it, put it together.
That's right, that's right.
Now you're talking like me.
If you want to buy the car, and the guy that sells it doesn't get his permissions, the carrier doesn't sell the car, even if it's in on one, it looks good. We can't move the car. We can't park the car. I mean.
We have these meetings all the time, and our goal is always to beat this, beat this by a long way. But it's really tough when we're, when we're talking about December, January, February. We've had years that got warm. We've had years that have been decimated by it. And the climbers are coveted once the winter gets, comes in because you call climbers up and they say, well, we, you know, we got four jobs before you. And let me tell you, we call them as early as we possibly can to try to get on their schedule. But they want to know that you have the equipment, that you're ready to go, that the towers are clear. They then have to get their own permission to get on the tower.
They get what they call, SBA has only trusted climbers. They have to have a notice to proceed, an NTP. Then you have to give them a window of the days you're going to work on a tower. Because they might have somebody else coming in to work on their stuff.
Yeah, Verizon could be doing work.
So you have to schedule to see if you can meet everybody else. Then, when they're done, they have to take pictures of how it's installed because the other people used to do sloppy work. And they have to draw tape measures and mark where everything ended up and give them a closeout document that this is where it ended up. Is this where you promised to put it? Is this where you put it? Because in the old days, it was the one. Couple of years ago, three years ago, people would put things in front of everybody else's stuff. You know, first come for service and the other guy would, you know, so they're doing a lot of straightening out. But because of that, it become a marching in line process. We'll invite you out today to work in there.
And I would love to tell you that there's, there's, there's something that you guys haven't done. You know, something that you could just, you know, ask for somebody to do other than, you know, Rose has been working. For what Rose has had to do, which I think she's been working pretty well on it. It's a lot to take on. There's a lot of back and forth, I'm sure, between the attorneys. But it's not like you guys have somebody that's failing on your side. There's.
We related a story, I related a story before the meeting, that we had a job in Windsor. It was an emergency. We met with the same SBA people in Vegas at a convention to a senior manager. And said, we have an emergency. People have been hurt. Police officers have been hurt in this town. We have a contract to put up an emergency system. We need a microwave dish from point A to point B on two existing towers that the town owned the land under. And originally gave up the towers to the tower people. Existing towers that they had stuff on, but we needed to put one microwave dish on. Three months, the emergency.
And that's what they consider as fast movement.
Three months.
Have we, are we, is there, are we made sense? Are we hitting upon things that you guys needed to do?
Yeah.
I may have missed it, but at the beginning of this whole process, did you give us a timeline of this is when I expect things to be done?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe I didn't even look at it. I didn't even look at that because I was listening to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and has all this been abided by? I mean, more or less? Or, or no, then not, right?
When we, well, when we put out the schedules originally, we, we cross our fingers and guess about how much time it's going to take the carriers and the, and the Verizon to give us, to give us access. So it gets extended based on that. We do it with every town. We say, hey, we hope this takes four months. You know, then COVID comes and it's been more like a six-month process. But, you know, if there was something we could have asked you guys to do to expedite other than calling the plane to them, which never works, as Bruce has stated, there's really not a whole lot we can do to push them.
Well, one thing you talked about back at the beginning was even the FCC, you know, that's totally out of your hands. You're applying for a frequency. You don't know when they'll come back to you.
We actually got those very early.
Right. But you were saying at the beginning, you said that's a, there's a mystery date right there.
The moon and the stars were crossed on that part, but we got that finished early.
We were very lucky on that because you can't start the tower process to, you know, the frequencies. So we lucked out that you guys went through, so.
A couple of questions. You mentioned earlier that you had the car equipment installed and the dispatch console.
Yes.
Now, without the rest of it, are these usable or what?
Yeah, they're using it on the old equipment.
Okay.
The old repeaters. And we programmed new digital stuff in with the analog. So they have everything programmed in the radio. So soon as the new system goes up.
Yeah, if you have a cataclysmic failure with the old system, the radios actually have the zoom to do it.
It's set to go.
So you probably want to be paid for that stuff then since you delivered it, right?
Yeah.
That stuff, that you guys took care of. Thank you.
You signed that check?
He covered it.
They asked for, they asked for cash.
Who doesn't?
The stuff that happens, you're using, you pay for. The stuff we have, you're not using, you haven't paid for.
The other big thing we're trying to protect us every town against is the equipment providers are not generous with their warranties. They allow it to be shipped our office. They give us a little time, but their expectation is that that stuff gets installed and the warranty starts. You never want to start any of your warranties in the future because that's obviously really pushing into account. So that's the other reason to not rush to the equipment.
But they needed equipment. In fact, we got COVID. One of the EMTs are paramedics. We're here doing installs outside.
Oh, yeah.
Keeping things clean. And she approaches her eyes and says, oh, I had a patient with COVID yesterday, and I'm being tested. I may have been in COVID. I don't know if I exposed you guys.
That was our first time. We had been dealing with COVID.
She got a phone call. We said, what are we doing? I said, you guys go home. Don't come into work until we hear about her test.
And she was, in the end, she was tested.
We were working in cocoons with our teams anyway. So if any team's uninfected, they wouldn't affect the rest of the people. But we got, we got hammed in, in COVID, but it turned out it was negative on her part.
Yeah, your staff was really cooperative though. They isolated our guys, gave us a good space to work, kept them away from us. They took the vehicles offline for us so they weren't being used.
What if, you know, we're working on a dispatch now in Hampton. What if we switch to a regional dispatch?
It integrates very well. The radio stock.
Well, what happens to the console? That's the most question I was writing down. Like you said, you install a new console. If dispatch is not physically located in our.
That's leased.
It's a lease. That's how it used to be, was a lease, so.
You can say goodbye to that. No problem. We have other ones to use it.
Right.
Very flexible.
Yeah, we're very easy to do with that. There's no commitment. You can use it for the next 20 years. You can return it next month.
I have a question. If I understand correctly, you said that the town was supposed to be kind of orchestrating this process? And when I first got involved and, and dealt with John and Andrew, and I had the information from SBA as to what they needed. I mean, it's a different language for me. And Andrew said, it's fine. I do it all the time. Is that the work that the town was supposed to do?
Chief Farnsworth originally was going to try to take some of that on from his past experience, but it is a lot for any fire chief, we see town officials to do on their own. It's just because it's an everyday thing. It's another call. It's another email.
The language and the things they ask for are things that require engineering. We have an engineering staff. They ask for this, they ask for that. And someone's related to cellular, someone's not related to cellular, they'll lift.
Chief Farnsworth definitely did what a lot of our customers will do. They'll try to break the ice and get our team going as the, as the chief. You know, they'll get a little bit more attention from the outside world. But a lot of times, even after they get momentum going, we will always still get involved. But even then, he wasn't getting the momentum that we had hoped because.
We don't know if COVID slowed him down or the fact that it was free. And a lot of things that we're getting paid for. We, we can't, we can't tell you.
We have very few towns that have what you guys have. You guys have free access to two surprise towns. You guys designed that. Well, a lot of our towns have the pay.
We tell all our towns, if somebody's going to come put a tower in your neighborhood, ask for the space where it goes. And then make sure you get it. I was telling the story that in Torrington, Connecticut, they had the space on the tower. And SBA told them, by the way, you don't have ground space.
Yes.
So we did a little thing to get them ground space for free. Took a little, a little maneuvering, okay?
So the next, the next thing we need to do is get the contract from, sign the contract with the Verizon, I guess it is? Yes.
And as long as you read the comments that Rose has provided and are satisfied with them.
All right.
Yeah, the only items of concern you might see there are, they say things like the, I think Rose reminded us all that they're, they don't make any sort of commitment, which is classic of them. Like they'll say, hey, you could be in our shelter, but if we ever want you out of there, you got to get out of there. They typically never throw you out, but they put language like that in. And also, if they ever have to change the shelter, they don't want trouble from you, but.
You have to cooperate. Most of the time, they're not using shelters anymore. A lot of the equipment's going outside and outside your equipment. If you find a shelter that's very good, I was in a site in South Kingston, Rhode Island, and I saw the smallest shelter I've ever seen for 18 feet. It looked like it was the back of a, of a two-person trailer. I can't believe it was that small because they're reducing the size of their equipment. Purpose is they don't want to rent the space and they don't want to pay for more.
Heating and cooling.
Not, not heating, cooling and taxes from the town. The smaller the footprint, the smaller the space, the less taxes you're paying.
Yeah, they have that, they have that in here, that they don't want to pay taxes on the, because there's improvements to the shelter. Which is fine. The other question I have though, there's a, they're asking for an insurance policy from the town. Million-dollar insurance policy.
Only? Just a million?
Yeah. Bodily injury or property damage.
Probably under our umbrella already.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to check, probably just check that out. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? No? Okay, so October 1st?
I didn't hear that.
I was just going to say, if you need somebody, you know, we can go out.
Go on those little giant ladders. I could go up there. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for coming in.
Saturday, we'll take care of our trash at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Unless we got any. Oh, yeah. Well, they were here, so I wanted to, the minutes are full, the minutes of the 27th, I believe it? And the 27th and the 10th?
The 27th was fine to me. There were a couple of little things I thought, just give you just words, you know? It says process instead of progress, but we'll be good.
Well, I think, I thought that the changes we asked that may have made, I think, actually reflect the meeting we had.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the 27th.
Second.
Oh, in favor? August 10th?
They'll come over. They'll look fairly after it.
Could I make a suggestion? I'm sorry.
No, maybe, and I think you brought this up before. I kind of go along with what you said. Do we get into too much detail sometimes? You know, with the, it's a little bit he said, she said, and it's, I mean, you want to, it's a, it's a fine line to really go. It's hard.
Right.
But do you get into a 27-page recitation of the minutes? Or do you get the sum and substance where comments were made, this was the decision, and something in between?
Considering now that we have Zoom, that you can refer back to if you had a need to, that they can be briefer, it seems to me, with just the highlights and.
I think an effort towards that would be.
But I can deal with either one, whatever you prefer.
I think an effort towards, I think, more concise.
More concise, just the, the meat of it, but not everybody's saying, everybody. On the 10th, on all of them, I thought, I would like a section that said those in attendance. So we knew who the, who the selectmen were that were there because, okay. And if we also had Zoom guests, and we could put our Zoom guests, list our Zoom guests on there. And the reason I would, I would do that is because you don't know who is here.
Well, I want to say, because I just saw a big guy enter the room, and it might not be easy to ascertain who they are from their name. That was the name they logged in, yeah, so.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if that's possible, but I know that when you go to regular meetings, you sign a sheet and they put you on the, on the agenda, so, around the minutes. So it seems like that would be helpful, so.
That doesn't help.
If it's not easy to do, we certainly don't have to do that, but I know that I, I've done that in other meetings.
Yeah, I think it's tough to legislate that.
Yeah.
I agree with the, make sure the word noted at the beginning that we're all here, those in attendance, physically in attendance are noted.
Physically in attendance.
But that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the 10th.
Second.
All in favor? All right, okay. Next item on the agenda is the update on the job classification and salary study update. I believe Mary.
Mary Akari, Akari is here. We, we did give you an update that she sent recently. On our side, the problem is that there are 20 who have not submitted the questionnaire. I've sent out a reminder and on Wednesday, when I have a staff meeting, we'll talk about it again and stress the importance. And several people that I've talked to who haven't submitted all said to me, I did this last year, and I didn't think I had to do it again this year.
Well, can you find last year's record?
Yeah, that's what I, I agreed to find last year's records. Then I'll, I give them.
What do you mean, last year?
2019.
Yeah, 2019.
Elaine, Elaine had done it as part of the.
Elaine had done some of this.
Yeah, but this is a whole different thing.
It is, yes.
I'd be fairly similar.
Yeah.
See if there's any usefulness for Zakari. If not, we'll just.
I think they should just fill it out. If they're going to be concerned about being underpaid and, and unappreciated and et cetera, they should fill out the form so we can get the thing done, so we can straighten it out.
Well, that's what we're going to get done.
You can't have it both ways. You know, I did it last year. I filled out my income tax last year too, so just, you know.
All right, now Mary is here to talk about.
Mary, I have some questions. Can you hear me?
Sure. Good evening. I can. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. So I, I got your list here. Can you see it?
Sure.
Color-coded thing. So the top part, those one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people, they fill out the, they fill out the survey and they've, you interviewed them. Have you had some kind of meeting with them?
I don't exactly see the list, but if it's the one with X's on the side that we got questionnaire, okay. So the ones.
It has X's on the column questionnaire in hand.
Right. So we sent out.
Next group of people, about 20 of them, it says need questionnaire as soon as possible. So are we assured that every one of the people got those questionnaires?
Yes, but as I said.
Well.
That they didn't have to do it twice, so they, that's been a bit of a holdup, but we're going to solve that.
Well, it's, it's very, very cooperative. Okay. The next group of people with the kind of the orange group there, or the, I would say, well, it's probably burnt umber color. Sample will be provided for edits. What does that mean?
So what we would suggest is, just to step back for one minute, for those who are in the meeting who don't know what's going on. The town was very fortunate to get a community compact grant to do a compensation and classification study. So what that means is we're going to do job descriptions for all positions. Compensation study of your surround, your labor market. And one thing that has come up is apparently there's an issue on different health insurance rates and contributions to our survey. We're going to get the health insurance rates from the other survey communities. And the reason we get the rate sheet is percentage doesn't matter. It's the cost of your plan. So we'll do that as well. And what we did back a few months ago is we sent an orientation video to the town administrator. We sent a questionnaire that was distributed by the town admin. At the same time as COVID and working from home was happening. So we got a good response in the beginning, and then it kind of trailed off. So what we did recently to kind of regroup as the summer was ending and people are starting to come back to work, we're saying, let's regroup because we really want to hit the ground running in September. So what the sheet is that you're looking at is there's three groups of, of employees. The first group is, we got the questionnaire and we've already done our interview. The second group is, we're waiting for the questionnaire and we need to do an interview. The third group is, we didn't get a questionnaire, but quite frankly, many of them are very part-time. Things like animal control, transfer station. Those are standard kind of statutory positions that rather than go through the exercise of filling out a questionnaire and doing an interview, we thought it might be more efficient to send a draft description that we might have in our, in our vault of job descriptions. We will do that for some positions. A firefighter EMT is a firefighter EMT across most municipalities. So to ask firefighter to fill out a questionnaire and go through a meeting almost seems redundant. By giving a draft, they can see what's, what's similar, what's not similar, and they can edit it. The ones that you see that have. A lot of nuances across municipalities. A good example is the title of administrative assistant. One town versus another town, that could mean something totally different. We don't want to say. We don't want to say, oh, what's your administrative job, assistant job description? We want to get the questionnaire, it's fairly simple, it's six pages, um, and then we do an individual. The phone, whatever people prefer, we usually do it in person, but that logistically with COVID gets a little troubling to make everybody available on the same day. So what we, we've already finished the council on aging, um, those work very well on Zoom interviews. So that group that we're trying to get going, now somebody mentioned something about, I did it last year. Quite frankly, I bet they looked at their job descriptions last. Near, which ties to how we evaluate the positions. So if somebody filled out a, um, a job description last year or some sort of questionnaire, we would be happy to look at that and have them attach that to our questionnaire, but we really do need our questionnaire filled out. And is, that may be frustrating to people, having both will help us in that individual interview. While I have met assistant, let me just pick an example, an assistant town accountant, a town accountant, a library director from other municipalities, I haven't met the ones in your town. Want to get it, those individual job descriptions. And the reason we want that is particularly in the world of pay equity and comparable worth, we want all positions across the organization. The worst thing that you can do, and sometimes you have to do it with vacancies, is cherry pick and adjust people's pay as they come and go. That just feeds the morale issues, it's very disheartening to, for employees to see, oh, you're gonna leave to make more money. We want to look at the whole thing, see where you are in the labor market and create a, that will last a, a number of years. In addition to, the most important thing is to have an updated and accurate job description. Many people look at these studies and say, oh, quote, it's an upgrade. It's study, it's not an upgrade study, it's a job description study, and we will also look at compensation and give recommendations on that. One thing that is already very clear is that you don't necessarily have pay ranges, you have set individual rates of pay. That can be very regressive in terms of longevity and moving through a pay scale over time. So those are the kinds of things we'll be looking at when we look at these positions and we look at the market out there. And, um, I don't know if you're under the market or not, we tend not. Knowing what the relative internal equity is, looking outside doesn't help, you don't want to just do a title search. So that's kind of a backdrop to maybe give an overview of what we're doing, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
What, when you have the, um, the job descriptions, then do we get a booklet of all the job descriptions that you produce?
Absolutely, you're gonna get them all electronically.
Okay, and, um, the, um, what is the timeline for this, when do you anticipate this project to be done? Did you get it?
No, I think she heard it.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what is the timeline for this, and when do you expect it all to be done?
Well, if we get the questionnaires filled out sooner rather than later, I'm assuming we will, um, it's the twenty-fourth today. If we could get them by September tenth, we would get draft job descriptions to you by the end of September, and we would be doing the survey simultaneously to the end of September during October. So I'm looking at, you know, November, sometimes response municipalities is the most difficult thing. People are busy, people are home with COVID, so getting that salary data from other municipalities can sometimes be a challenge, but we're pretty. So certainly, you would have the results in a report in time to plan for next year's budget. Typically what we see, now if you've got lots of money lying around and you see some things need to be adjusted, you could adjust it. But typically what we see is people moving forward to the next budget season, but that's a policy decision for you to make, so it will be this fall. We did start a few months ago and we really were not able to secure the questionnaires, and I know the town administrator has, uh, I think we've regrouped after everybody's vacations, and now with Labor Day coming, I think it's gonna be a good time to get it done.
So, so you'll give us a job description and you'll give us a, a salary range comparisons, or?
Yeah, so in terms of what we give you, we will give you a report and a set, a separate addendum will be all the job descriptions, we're looking at approximately forty positions that you, job descriptions for, we're gonna give you the results of the salary survey, we're gonna say where you are in the market, we're gonna compare you to the market. We'll say whether you're above the market in some positions within the market and below the market. But then what we will do is we will actually recommend a compensation plan for you, we will recommend grades and pay ranges. So not everybody should be paid the same rate, there's different values to positions, your department heads are gonna make more than their staff. So what we will end up doing is classifying into grades, whether we call it grade one, two, three, four, five through ten, and say which positions should be in which grade based on our review of the job descriptions and the market survey. So you will get a classification plan and a compensation plan.
Now, by market, by the market, you'll meet comparable towns, some towns are comparable size, or?
Well, the reason we use market is because I could find the exact match in population and budget to you on the South Shore of Massachusetts. That's not your market. Your market is who's gonna drive to your town, how far will people go to work? So your market may be smaller towns, bigger cities, now we do discount, you know, it's partly analytical science, but it's also the art of, you know, in the eastern Massachusetts, everybody wants to compare themselves to Cambridge, because Cambridge pays really well. But what, to, for example, um, using, us, we use a compass method, it's like an assessor's map that you use via butters and then you go all around. So we tend to do a market survey of about eight to twelve municipalities that are in your region. Now, if there is an outlier that is particularly wealthy, who's gonna skew the numbers, we mitigate that in our report, so it's not just, uh, population, we look at the equalized value, we use a lot of the D O R information to say, who are we gonna pair ourselves to, and that really drives it. As you imagine your, as you think of your employees, you say, well, how far, who's the furthest commute? How far are people willing to work, uh, to drive to go to work? That's really your market, and we tend to get more data than less so that, and we evaluate it both by the average and the median, so that we get the, a median gives you the middle point and drops off the high or the low. So if one of your surrounding municipalities is a very poor town, they might not be a good comparable, so we don't use the word comparable, we use the word market. But we do do a large net.
And, and, and in the, in the, in the market, do you take into account, like, cost of living? You know, like it's the South Shore, the cost of living would be a lot different than here, or Kamers, obviously, you know, an apartment over there is, you know, ten thousand.
Right, so we wouldn't. We wouldn't use any of those, we wouldn't, what we will do is look at the municipalities that are touching your town and those that are touching those towns. So, you know, it, it really is, it makes no sense to, even if it's the perfect population and the town of Rutland, Mass, which is in central Massachusetts, doesn't make sense, it's not your, it's not part of your market area, it's not your labor market. So it can be tricky, have large cities and, uh, wealthier towns nearby, you will look at that and say, well, maybe that's not a true comparable. But that's what we do when we look at the, the equalized value and the average family tax bill, things like that, that really determine what is the most comparable. But we won't leave your, you know, you've got your county, we might reach into another county, but we wouldn't go further than that.
One quick question, in your experience, and you talked about finishing this basically at the beginning of the second quarter of our fiscal year, do you see communities try and make adjustments inside the fiscal year, or do they wait till the beginning of the following fiscal year? If you found some inequity in a position, oh my gosh, this position should be paid ten thousand dollars more, would you recommend they find some way to fund that, or say, take care of it when the next budget cycle starts?
That's really.
Case by case.
Yeah, I mean, that's really a policy decision, we tend, I've done about, I've been with the Collins Center almost eleven years, and I've done about seventy of these. I have never had anybody take care of an individual. It's been a, we set a policy that we're gonna make our adjustments for January, or we're gonna, our adjustments for July. We have municipalities do it mid-year, because sometimes there's been vacancy savings, or there's been money put aside for it. So really, that's up to you and your budget deliberations, um, but we certainly don't recommend, um, doing it, uh, 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 we call it cherry picking. Why is somebody more valuable than somebody else, you really should have.
I wasn't saying like one person, would you say in your experience, do they make the adjustments right then, or they wait for, so let's take a fiscal break, and then take care of it as a overall basic reset, if you will?
Right, you, you're absolutely right, they do it at one time, in some, in January, and I've seen it in July.
When you give us the final report, will you, the, the towns that you have compared us to, or the cities that you have compared us to, will we get data on them so that we can see the comparison that was made?
Yes, absolutely, and what I will do is once I finalize the towns we want to use, I'll send that to the town administrator, so that you can see who we're gonna use, or who we're gonna ask. Sometimes, we really have to beat towns over the head to get the data back, so if we get enough data, sometimes we'll, you know, not use a town that we've contacted. But that will all be, that will all be in the report, who we've used, uh, the summary, we have the, the report will have the summary data, it won't have, um, Long Meadow pays, you know, you can have that spreadsheet, but the report won't have every town's every title, we do a summary of that for you, but that data is available to you to look at.
I, I, I guess I would also say that, you know, we are in a, um, this has been going on for some time, and, um, I don't want to put pressure on you, but the sooner we get this, the, the better I would like it, I know that. So I will put that little hot caveat there, and, um, then I would say to Mr. Markle that I think the, um, the employee should do this, the checklist that she has given them. I would agree that that's the way to go, as opposed to, I did it last year.
Yes, I think that, I think we hit a bump in the road somewhere, and I'm not sure where that is, and all we can do is move forward, because the questions were sent out almost two months ago, uh, so there's a good number that we're waiting on, so if that could be, um, um, an encouragement by the board, that would be really helpful to us.
Well, I think with the, uh, actually the resurgence of the town on place coming back into the building, it's gonna make it much easier for Bob to, to do that.
Right.
Such, you know, up in the air, who knew, and I'm sure that may not have been a priority for some people, where they're worried about, is there gonna be a job? And what are my children gonna be doing for school?
Right, right.
Now they can focus on that, and it's a good.
Three kids in three different school situations.
So you know.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Good, Mary, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, great, have a good evening, Bob, I'll talk to you soon, be well, everybody.
That's that town, the town administrator.
I would like to make a comment, because I am the one who sent an email to the board, after I realized what anyone's paying was going to be paid. And I am not representing the other employees here, I've talked with them over the years, as you can imagine, it's the conversation that comes up from time to time, but I was the sort of instigator, I don't want. I just don't want the staff to be penalized in any way.
No, no. Yes, okay, nobody's gonna get penalized, what we need to do is get it done, and all they're asking to do is fill out the questionnaire, so we can go to the next step, so we could address any issues anyone might have.
That's all, move forward.
All right, onward. Roll the, roll the hands of the fire department.
I have begun, um, what you've asked me to do, and that is to evaluate, uh, the department and its future, as a way of making, or helping to make a decision on what the building should be like. I've had an initial conversation with the chief on this, obviously, we're going to have to have, uh, the, the department itself involved in the discussion. I've asked him to submit some information, and, uh, can't promise to have it on the thirty-first, but I would say in two weeks I can have the report complete, completed, included for you.
I, I would think that the, the fire department, um, future, the vision of what they're going to be, the mission of what they're gonna try to accomplish, is more complicated than that. I think we have to have a needs assessment, an objective needs assessment, I don't think the firemen, they're one piece of it, but they're not the whole piece. I think we have to have community input, I think we have to survey communities our, our size to see what kinds of fire departments they have and what, how they are meeting their needs. I think we have to have a five, ten, and twenty-year plan to say, okay, this is where we should be starting, but this is where we think we might want to go. Um, I think we have to have a cost analysis that goes along with all of that. So I think it is a whole process, um, just like when you're building a new school, or any new undertaking that you're taking, you can't just say, well, okay, this is, um, you know, we'd like to do A and have not, not looked at anything else. I think particularly important is community input, and I think it should be a broad cross-section, and I think this is a hard time to do that in. So we'd have to come up with a way that we could do that that's effective and efficient, but I think the town has strong feelings on this, on this subject, and they ought to have the opportunity to voice those opinions, um, and have those included in any kind of final document.
You know, I, I think that's on, on target, I, I think that, uh, any kind of change in the fire department from what exists at this point, going to have to have public approval. Part of the challenge there is to get a real sampling of public opinion, I mean, there are people who are going to be outspoken, but I think I'm probably going to hear from a dozen to a dozen and a half people who are outspoken. And the question is, are, are they representative of the larger community or not? And if, uh, let's say we, we get an opinion, uh, is that gonna hold up at a town meeting? Already, I think it's clear that, uh, having a full-time fire department for a community that seems to have a stable population of five thousand or fifty-one hundred people, is not in the cards. There may be some who advocate for that, but, uh, right off the bat, my inclination would be that, that's not the direction that the town wants. We'll have to wait and see what the community says, but, and, and assessing what the community thinks, and as I said, is gonna be a challenge without having a professional survey done, so. I mean, I'll listen to people who, I'm sure people will be submitting opinions, and I'm certainly, I'll include that. But the question always is, in any community, you've got, uh, a limited number of people who are active and engaged and involved in the community and its affairs, and you have a large population that you don't hear from. And, and yet, they may vote, uh, if we have a, you know, a ballot question of some kind, or they may come to town meeting even. And so, it's, the trick is to assess what those who aren't active and engaged and involved are thinking and where they want to go.
I think it goes back to, as you said before, a cost analysis, you could have A, you can have B, right now you have a single shift, you could have twenty-four seven, but it'll cost you this much. You do have the ultimate community forum in the town meeting, where they vote yes or no on that number. However, it's good to be able to explain the numbers ahead of time to them, we have this, but how do you get that to everybody? It's not gonna be through Facebook, we need face-to-face, and it's been difficult, we as a board have been, I think, forward on having forums, starting with the, the auditorium for the waste management. With the COVID situation, we haven't been able to do that, you've brought forward several opportunities, you thought, for public input, and we just haven't been able to take care of that. Is there a rush to get this done until we have the opportunity to really bring everybody together? And as Bob said, you have the vocal, and honestly, you have the silent majority that aren't maybe as informed as we would like them to be. We, I think, we had a newsletter being done monthly through the Scribe, we need to reintroduce that with a message from the select board. These are the issues in front of us, it needs to be a message that the three of us endorse, and is brought out to everybody. I really encourage, I agree with you a hundred percent, a public forum, asking people, what do you see? But not just input per se, at the same time, we give them some definitive numbers. Let's have, here's some data, what do you, I'm sorry, what, let me just, here's choice one, two, three, perhaps there's choice four, we don't know about, we didn't think about, like you mentioned in the other thing. And let them come back to us with some thoughts, but we do have to lead, but we lead with guidance.
I think the process has several steps, and I don't think that the first step is having a forum, I think the first step is getting some data, surveying area communities. How, you know, you have five thousand people, you have five thousand people, what do you have, okay, so, but we have to make that plan of this is the kind of stuff. I agree with you that there is no rush to do this, I mean, because there are, some of those plans are pretty sophisticated, and would not be gonna be done tomorrow. So I think that we, but I do think we need, we need to, we need to have an intelligent approach to getting the data, and then I think we need forums that are just dialogues. Not where we say, this are our options, but we say, what do you people want, let's have, let's have a discussion, like we would around our kitchen table. Okay, what, what do you see for the needs of the community for fire, and take notes of what they see, and then do a follow-up forum that says, okay, we've taken what you've said, and this is how it fits into three different plans, four different plans, five different plans, now let's hear your feedback about those. You know, I mean, I think it's a whole process, because I think it's a huge decision, I mean, I really do, it changes the whole tenor of the town a bit, and it, and it makes a commitment for future generations, you know, so I think it's, it's a, it needs to be an intelligent approach.
Well, that's why I was saying, I think maybe the label of this topic, the role of the fire department, might be a little misleading. I think the future of the fire department might be a little more, you know, where are they going? Are they gonna provide this service, this service? I do think, though, as you said, you know, it's good to have these people with input, to be able to answer their questions, that's great, I mean, we'd all love twenty-four-seven service. But at least you have some answers saying, yeah, well, that's gonna cost the average town, or the homeowner, three hundred dollars a year, or five, or whatever.
Having costs related to the service, very important. I mean, I've been thinking of the earlier political campaign this year, where they did surveys, and the public said, yes, we want Medicare for all. Then they came out with a number, and it turned south. So you have to relate what people want to what it's gonna cost them, in order to get, get a valuable opinion.
If you have no knowledge of what that lease payment is, you'll all want the best card, but that's when you get this.
So let me give you, I'm just gonna give you some data, you want some data? In nineteen eighty, the population of the town was four thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. In two thousand twenty, the population of town is five hun, five thousand one hundred and thirty-nine. So over a course of forty years, we increased by ten people a year. At that rate, in another forty years, we'll have fifty-five hundred people in town. Right? So I think that says a lot about the, the, the size of the fire department, or any other institution that we have, okay? The fire department had a hundred and seven, or a hundred and fifty-something calls, I think, last year. Fifty-one of them were false alarms, a hundred and seven of them were for fires, three hundred and ninety-two of the calls were for EMS. We've already taken care of the EMS problem, because now we have twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five service. I'd like to address, first of all, the, the safety issues up there at the, I think, the ventilation system. I think we can take care of that before we need any kind of big plan, okay? In the interim, I thought, you know, if they're up there, they have this, this ventilation system, why couldn't the three firefighters who are here eight to four move down to the town hall, or move out of the building, for safety reasons? And why couldn't we use the part where they use for training and that stuff, for the storage of the equipment that the, I think, I think we have to look at different options. There's a lot of, they call it Firematic, so I guess their uniforms are, you know, PPEs and all that kind of stuff. Because one of the things they're saying now, they don't have proper storage, and they can't get at it, you know, and we can address the things like, it needs a smoke detector in there, it needs a carbon dioxide detector, it needs some more fire extinguishers. I mean, we think we can address those short-term things, I think, but I think, future-wise, it doesn't bode well for twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, anything.
Yeah, plus the mission, the number of fires.
Because, right, because of regulations, structures, how is there required to do, you know, sprinkler systems, you know, and they do a lot of inspections, they do those things, you know.
Well, the town has been pretty good, and you've known, you've voted for a number of them, at keeping the equipment, the fleet, if you will, up to par.
Best we can, yeah.
And we rely on the fire department, and they've always been there for us, different chiefs down the road, to delineate what type of apparatus they need next. And we trust in them, because they respond, so next one needs to be a tanker, but doesn't need to be, it should be an attack vehicle, doesn't need to be a brush vehicle. Perhaps in this day of more heat and more dead rush, maybe we need another brush truck.
The solar things, maybe they need something different with the solar phones.
It's a concept, it's a moving target, you can't say five years ago, this is the plan, because things change.
I'm just talking population-wise, though.
And I think, you know, your point is right, you know, keep the door open, keep constant. The key part is keeping communication fluid, and nothing is locked in.
Well, I'm on the topic, I wanna talk about the ambulance up there. The, the, the fire department ambulance, the role of the fire department. So if we purchased the ambulance, it's sitting there, it's not registered, I mean, it's not certified, not, you know, and I think we need to find a role for it. You know, and I think the first step is to at least start the process to get it able to respond at some point.
Well, I thought the email was they were asked to hold off on the certification until we-
Yeah, right, so this is, that's the topic I'm bringing up, so kicking along, so I don't know if you wanna talk about tonight, or something.
I agree, I mean, like you say, we own it, let's make it more usable. I mean, I assume we're not talking ten thousand dollars to get it usable, it's already came with a ton of equipment, it's already been repaired on their dime.
Right, it's gotta be certified, it's gotta, they have to get an inspector out here, and they have to do some other things, too. So we need to push that along, so we, can I put that as a topic for next week?
Let's just say, if you don't mind, I mean, if we're talking something easily inside their budget, and they have a pretty flexible budget at the beginning of the year, let them bring that number to Bob, and if he feels it's worthy of done, get it done. If he feels it's not, bring it back to us for further discussion.
And the reason to have the additional ambulance here is, the rationale is for that, is what?
Backup transportation, because there may come a time when action, can't get someone out here in time, three-car accident, house fire, several people injured.
Roll over off the road.
With that argument, you could always add another one, whether there were two, well, there were two fires, whether there were three fires.
This is, this is a minimal cost, a rollover off the road, and two people in the car, you're gonna want two things responding, to have two people right there.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but what I have a problem with is-
Mutual aid.
Is, I don't know how that works, I don't know, can they, can they sustain themselves on mutual aid, is that something that they can become a mutual aid for, fire department, or?
They don't need to sustain themselves, they just, we have it there, we should be able to have it as a backup, just in case, and use it, that's my only-
So, so for the fire department that stood up at town hall, and said we need three firemen, in order, so that we'll have coverage eight to four, now they're gonna say, okay, but two of them can go in an ambulance someplace, then we don't, then we have one fireman, which they thought that couldn't be done with one fireman. I mean, it just seems to me there are a lot of iterations to this, that we should be thinking about and, and planning for. But I think we can put it on the agenda for next week, I'm very comfortable with that.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week. Right? So the next item is the ambulance contract designated role, and I, I sent you an email, I just printed out the different. So.
I also had a discussion with Frank McNeil at Action Ambulance, and asked him to send me a statement explaining how they expect to interact with the contact person, and so that's in your file. Basically, it comes down to the person that they wanna contact initially from the town for special events, dispatch-related issues, training. And also, you know, to provide quarterly reports and regular meetings with the chief, so. I, I don't think there's anything extraordinary here, we just have to have a person that they know they can call when something is needed.
Yeah, and when I was going through the contract on the designated role, there's nothing extraordinary there. They basically want someone, if there's a big town event, and we want an ambulance there for, just to cover, then that person calls up and says, send the ambulance to the Hampton Town Fair. And also, for training, just to receive the reports, and I think one of the other things was on dispatch-related issues, I was thinking, you know.
Well, we had a discussion about the two people we were talking about, you had the, obviously, there was some concern that there would possibly be a change in work condition, or whatever it called. So based on the fact that really, it's not overwork, I don't see why we just don't make another fire chief, and not have the other issue be-
I think we already voted for it.
And why are we discussing the designated role?
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to-
So why is it back up?
Oh, no, there's not, it's, it's just because I wanted to just explain what it was, that's all, explanation.
All right, so, go back to what you were saying, then that is the fire chief.
It is the fire chief, and that's what, that's some of the things, that's some things.
I did think it was a bit odd to appoint the person, and then find out what they're doing. I mean, it would have seemed, it would have seemed to me-
Why do they're doing it before?
You have a job description before you point the person, so that you know that they have a skill set to do this.
We knew what they were doing, because it was in the contract.
Right.
Well, the one, the first of all, this one that I got is not accurate, but I don't know, I didn't check against the contract.
No, that's not accurate, that's ten minutes, that's ten minutes.
It's illogical, I mean, there probably, there may be others, I don't worry, anyway, whatever.
Continuing view of the dispatch consolidation alternative?
We know, actually, I think the important issue here is costs. The chief would say, police chief would say, it's also service, and that with consolidation, you could actually have emergency medical dispatch as intended, which is a critical part of the process of providing emergency care. We know what the costs are for consolidation with Westcom. There's forty thousand dollar fee to join. We would have to extend fiber optic line over to East Long Meadow, an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars.
No, why the East Long Meadow, because there, because there's tied up, tied into them?
They're tied in, and their head end would be on Allen Street, so it's not a long run there. And then another twenty-six thousand dollars for basically CAD mergers and so forth. Those are the basic costs, over and above that, you might have some costs for unemployment compensation, depending upon the market and hiring and so forth. The chief has said that he now has a budget to cover any unemployment comp. And so, between now and the end of the fiscal year at least, that would not be an additional expense for the town. I contacted East Long, I contacted Wilbraham, and asked them to provide the same information. Mr. Gentile did respond to me, and said he will provide that for us. It was not available for tonight, but I expect that in our meeting on Wednesday, that that kind of information will be available, so that the board can compare costs, or estimated costs. We do know that running a fiber line into Wilbraham, according to the chief of police, will cost about a hundred thousand dollars, and you have to run it right into where the high school is.
Don't they have it, is it a third mergers?
I thought, and I said this before, I'm pretty sure they did fiber connections for all the school buildings, so I'm surprised that that's the closest end. What this gets into is all fiber, the same fiber.
That's what I was told. And then, there would obviously be the same estimated costs for a systems merger, which would be in the range of twenty-five to twenty-six thousand dollars. There's no cost to join in Wilbraham, and any other expenses that would be identified by Mr. Gentile, and I think we'll have that data for Wednesday. And then, then we'll have a comparison, by the way, we do not know that the Wilbraham selectmen are agreeable to this. I explained that to them in the, in the message I sent to them last week, that we're looking at costs, but we don't know that this is approved by your board of selectmen, so. I don't have an indication that they disapprove, but we have not had any, any indication from the full board that they're agreeable to a merger or consolidation with Hampton.
And would any of these, any of these costs to join, you know, to run the fiber optic line and all that stuff be picked up by the grant?
I was told in the recent call to the nine eleven office that they have some funds, that they really want to see consolidation. Now they're using a carrot, I think it's fair to say that they're gonna use the stick later on, future years. Right now, they have, I was told that we have some money to help facilitate this. We haven't gotten into the real numbers on that, but I think if we, by the way, Wilbraham also, the Wilbraham town administrator made a call, and was told, yes, we would be willing and able to increase the contribution that we make to Wilbraham from currently fifty-two thousand dollars to over two hundred, so the-
The state we make.
Yeah, the answer to the question that the Wilbraham police chief raised, what's in it for us? Is that, that they would be receiving a significant increase in funding from the nine eleven office, so.
And I had, I had asked last week if you could look at, could there be any savings from the dispatch in town?
Yes, I'm meeting, I was supposed to meet today, I'm gonna meet tomorrow with the head of our union, our dispatch union. She was supposed to be in today, sent me a message saying I can't do it, but she's coming tomorrow, I've already teed that up, I've just said that what I wanna talk about is, the third question that was raised by the selectmen, and that is, are there any ways that we can affect savings in our own dispatch operations? She did not give me an answer, she said, I have a few ideas, so we'll see what those ideas are, I'll have a report on that next time.
I'd like to look into the fiber thing, if you don't mind, I know we have fiber in our town hall, we did part of the Hampton Broadband one-two-three initiative several years back. So it really comes back to, does it need to be a dedicated fiber line, or can you hop onto the data highway, if you will? So that may reduce the cost, what about?
All right, anything else on that?
Quickly, so you have a meeting Wednesday?
Wednesday-
And the meeting is posted, or not posted?
The meeting is posted for the board of selectmen.
Okay, so we can attend and listen.
They may post their meeting as well. At our last session, we had one member of their board, but in discussions with Nick, they may post their meeting, because more than one member may have an interest.
John, insurance study committee, you brought that up.
Just a thought, I mean, obviously, it's a huge part of our, our budget here, both health insurance, and I see Dick on the call, and he does a good job being our interface to the Scenic Valley. Is it something we should periodically review, and Don, you may recall, back in the day, the town had an insurance committee, we had the- Is it something we should periodically review, and Don, you may recall, back in the day, the town had an insurance committee, we had the Lou Barbo, Hank Hamner. Those chaps who were in the industry giving their advice, if they will, to the town. Is that something we should take advantage of, we used to have an electric committee with people with that background, the insurance committee, same thing, and I put it out to the board. Should we take advantage of those people's knowledge and let them participate in basically reviewing and giving back to us? Like I said, right now, Dick did a pretty good job being our representative to the Skanick Valley Health Trust with the changes going on, and personally, at my business, we were. Proposed a twenty-two percent increase in our insurance rate.
To jump down.
We were so grateful that it was only twenty-two percent, we volunteered to give them more, we actually changed, changed plans.
Would, would, would this insurance committee look at, like, our liability, or workers' comp and all that kind of stuff, too?
Or call for volunteers, this is something, and again, a committee, I think there are people out there that say, what, meet three or four times a year? I'd love to have a chance to get back without having to do something like, you know, onerous, so.
I, I don't have a problem with doing that.
That establishment?
Well, I'd like to, may, put a press release, town administrator put out something to the paper and say, hey, volunteers, we never turn them down.
Alright. Town treasurer.
The town treasurer, as you know, was elected, but the board of selectmen are charged with appointing an assistant town treasurer, and Nick has a candidate.
Unmute him?
He muted, unmute him.
There you go, there he is.
Yes, I'd like you to appoint Michelle to the, Michelle Boudreaux as assistant treasurer, she's been working with me since January. And we, it's part of our effort to make sure that the town can continue to operate if I get hit by a bus.
We don't have any buses.
I sometimes leave town.
Well, on the recommendation of the town treasurer, I would like to make a motion to appoint Michelle Boudreaux as assistant town treasurer.
And I would second that, and she is also the person that we appointed to the school committee, so.
Is that required, is she already, is she already a special municipal employee?
Yeah.
I think she.
Dick, so, does, is she have to get bonded and stuff like that?
Yes, yeah, the bond is twenty-five percent of the treasurer's bond, if for some reason she was unable to get bonded, the appointment would be void.
Okay, right, any further discussion?
And we have a workstation set up for her in the.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Rock, the Rock and Dundee Bridge replacement.
Thank the state for sending us a notice for a bridge replacement we weren't asking for. We sent them a note, if you go back to the hazardous plan, Pam PBPC worked on maybe two thousand seven, two thousand eight, wasn't even in the cards as having a problem at that time. We, Bob has worked on, I think, asking for funding for the Lappingbrook Bridge and the Clover project, and. They somehow threw a dart at the map and picked something else.
Nice.
Thank you.
Where's the construction, sorry?
Well, what we're gonna do is put a label on the other bridge we want done, calling it the Rock and Dundee Bridge, maybe they won't notice.
Mark has, has done site inspections of this bridge.
Yeah.
And it may need a little bit of work, some with the under portion of the bridge, but absolutely does not need a replacement, and can't understand why they suggested it so.
And we just paved that road.
Yeah. Alright, well.
Failing not to see the highway superintendent here, I'd ask to table that.
Yep, table that, okay. We had a resignation of a planning board member, Ed Lico resigned.
Actually, actually, I, I spoke with the chair of the planning board today, he has not resigned.
He has not.
He will continue until a replacement is approved.
Okay.
So. I don't know, I said, I said to Bob Howard, Judge Howard, do you have someone to propose? And he said, well, we don't at this point, but.
Yeah, it's happened before, they get some interest, typically, years past, it was always a promotion from the board of appeals, the planning. So, I imagine they'll put it out there, and some will come forward, and at that point.
Is that something we should advertise to?
But so that they don't, all of a sudden, don't have enough for a special program thing, don't let the guy step away from the board, because you need that minimum number anyhow.
Okay, cancel resignation.
Right.
Cancel letter of regret.
Well, don't date it.
Don't date it. Tyler Whitcup.
That's a, that's a loss.
That's a loss.
Good for, good for him, he's advancing and, you know.
Okay. Alright, then the, I had the plan to address the water issue, and that's the, the continuing. And I just, I, I just, I think I need a meeting just on that to get everything, to understand everything, so.
That we have to, first of all, let me just, again, this has gone on for a few years, Tom Kucher, who's the vice president of Time Bond, has a lot of history to it. I was going to pass his contact information on to Bob, so that he can get a little history of it without obviously getting into the, and then report back to us. Maybe with a concise little line-by-line type thing.
Yep, okay, and then we can meet, I told the homeowners that we could meet with them at once, but meetings.
I put in a call to Time Bond, but haven't heard back from them, and John then said the person that you were working with was Kucher.
Town clerk, I put this on for the September primary, just I assume it's gonna be held the same way.
Yeah, Eva was saying tonight, she's stunned at the numbers coming in early voters.
I was gonna say, and how about absentee, the mail-in votes, too?
Well, now she's looking at, she's gonna check with the state and see if they can start the count early, I believe she said. You know, just because if there's so much of a volume coming in, is there a way to do that?
Because they were talking about the long.
Cannot.
I don't know, she was just gonna look into it.
Because they were concerned about, when, when are you gonna get the count, because they really can't start until this thing closes.
Bring some more people in, you know.
No, but I mean, obviously, if they do a count, it's gotta be a seal, even though we've gotten this done, nobody knows, but.
And, and I assume she's gonna set it up the same way she did before, which was, which really worked out pretty well.
Now, were those the partitions, and we need them back from other places, did we have them, the ones they had set up in the voting? No, but I mean, weren't they the ones we then moved down to the offices after somewhere? Yeah. There we go, and that'll actually have to, what are we gonna do with the receptions?
She won't be receptive that day.
She won't be receptive.
Got a, got a vacation day.
They only closed the town hall that day, except for voting.
No, I'm just saying, it might be.
Yeah.
It might be, some places do, like, I mean, when they, it doesn't matter where they use the school, schools off that day.
But that's next week, that's Monday, Tuesday.
Recommendation from Eva on that.
So, one other item here is, I did give you a copy of the draft SCM warrant. You wanna schedule a time to final review and signing, or do you wanna make any changes?
Well, there's a couple of changes, I did see, and Dick, I see you're still in the meeting, didn't you have a request for some money for bond payment, or you wanted to add to the warrant?
I submitted an article for short-term debt payment four weeks ago, I thought I saw it on one of the early drafts.
Okay, it's not on this draft.
I have it.
Okay. Alright, it's not on this one, and then also.
Which goes to my point about putting a date on everything at the bottom, just as a notation, so that you know what's going, you're picking up.
Date and time.
Yeah. Because you get a hundred.
Early afternoon, late afternoon.
Yeah, right.
I would also delete article nine, although, and Bob probably put this in from his experience, which is transfer from the general stabilization account to the general fund. Technically, that's a correct article, something we've never done, when we ever take money out of stabilization, it's for a project, we put down, it's for the trees, it's to buy a truck or something like that. This just has a bad appearance, let's take some money out and put it somewhere for later, so.
Do you want me to just delete the article, or, because I don't think we have any?
I would delete the, I just don't like the appearance of it, it's just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give the appearance that we do this type of thing, we never have. You see where we're taking money, we took money out for the trees, we took money out to buy, you know, something. You knew why you went to saving, you just couldn't put five hundred dollars in your savings account and left it laying around the house.
Okay.
Other than that, I think it's pretty good, what isn't decided, are we locking in on October fifth? And that we should make a decision on.
And that's gonna give the planning board time for all their.
Yeah.
Hearings and all that stuff.
When do we normally have it?
Normally, it's like almost Halloween, it's the last Monday.
Last Monday in October, that's what I thought, so, this is pushing it up.
Yeah.
Pushing it up because we're worried that if the second wave comes, we may have to have this outside. That's something to also decide, because it's special town meeting, we're not obligated to have it on a Monday, we're not obligated to have it at night. If the board show thinks this is something we should do, we can have it at one o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday at the back field of Thornton Burgess, something like, you know, whatever. Some towns have done that, you've seen probably reports of plenty of towns, yeah, Wayneup did one, I think, Southwood did it in a parking lot. And the weather be good enough, October fifth, you know, to do it.
So, if you do October fifth, then we ought to finalize the warrant, that's would be on the fourteenth, so we'd have time to get it posted within the two weeks window.
Yeah, if we're doing, obviously, if we're gonna talk about, we're doing the third, not the fifth, because we're talking about the Saturday afternoon. Really, it would affect your timing thing, you know.
Or the tenth, right?
Well, the tenth, I believe, is Veterans Weekend, right?
Columbus.
Columbus, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it feels to be Columbus for indigenous people, their weekend. Right, so.
Um, well. I'm sort of a, a thing in, the, the fewer changes you make, the better off you are, so, you know, that's, that's just where I come from, so. October fifth seems like it would be early to me, and it seems like people have to get a readjustment to that, and will we get a crowd, I don't know. Whereas, maybe the end of October date, if that's what people are used to coming, you know, but sometimes we don't even have a crowd for that.
Yeah, used to coming is all fifty people, thank you so much.
Right, exactly, you know, I mean, it's not a crowd for it.
If we didn't have the Girl Scouts selling big goods at the entrance, I'm not sure we'd get the fifty.
I don't know that it makes sense.
And I think the board's done a good job of, I won't say paring it down, but again, we're not having any.
But it, but it does, it does seem like, I would, I would think having it indoors would be the better plan, because we're not making two changes, we're not making a change in date.
No, no, and that's why, again, my concern was the, the second wave.
Well, it's, it's, big emotion for Monday the fifth.
Keep it inside.
Yeah.
Look, I mean, what did he say he could fit last time, and this is a question for Rick, I think he said he had spacing for a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
We're not gonna.
That would be a, for this type of warrant, it would be a stretch.
October fifth is Monday, have you voted?
I'll take a motion to, certainly, the date of the special town meeting to October fifth, seven o'clock in the evening at Thornton W. Burgess School.
Second.
All in favor?
In a week or so, we'll actually close the warrant.
Yeah.
I think. Has, hasn't advisory already scheduled their, their hearing date? I think I saw something about that. Yeah, so I think they. Right, so, the special town meeting, I think it's a two-week thing, so, yeah. Right.
Anything else to come before the board?
Would you like a motion to enter into executive session?
No, no, because I have something, I had asked, I had asked Bob to do a survey, put together a quick survey. Of the town employees and of any residents that come in to visit the town, about, about town hall hours. How they feel about the hours, and whether they should be extended, or evening hours, or salary, so. He's writing it down, no, it's not in there, they just.
Sorry, TA report.
Well, TA report.
We've done the pre-bid conference for the garage expansion project.
You got a club.
That was well-attended. Larry Todd will answer a number of questions. As you can see, I had a discussion with Chair of Conservation Commission about the conservation agent position. That seems to be, I think, a good option for us right now. We have a couple of things to work out, I did talk with the Wilbraham Conservation Agent, and she's willing to provide training. And then, secondly, after the initial training, I think we should send our conservation administrator to the classes, which you can get online. Put on by the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. By the way, the town is a member. This morning, I didn't think so, but found out that we are a dues-paying member, and so we should take advantage of, of that. The kind of training that's really important, because the law is very complicated. Signed the contract with the state Office of Energy and Environment for the Municipal Vulnerability Project. Signed the contract for the maintenance of the town's nine defibrillators. We're still looking at agenda management software, the ambulance oversight committee, we now have four applicants. And Pam has placed an ad in the newspaper, so that more people can see what we're looking for.
Can we decide on that next week?
You wanna put that on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, yeah, that's a reason.
Alright. It's also, well. It's also on the town website. Entree is, entree computer is still struggling. Mostly because, I mean, they can do the work, but they can't get the product, and so. I got a message from them that they weren't able to do what they were intending to do last Thursday, so. They think the product comes in today, and they may come out tomorrow, he's gonna give me a call. We're having a staff meeting, and we're gonna discuss the salaries, wages, things on October the twenty-sixth. I did send a message to Representative Ash, and I did call Representative Rich Neal regarding earmarks to help support the fire station project. And I think that's, that's it, Mr. Joe.
I don't know, I would have to say, based on that headline I saw on Mass Live, if something goes a certain way, you should have an INP, and be getting some fire station funding.
You should have.
Joe's friend.
FEMA should be down here the day after, paying for everything.
On item two there, I would say that, and thank you for the information on it, but that's nothing that really concerns the board, there's no action by the board required.
For which one?
Item two.
Oh, no.
No, it's stripped under your purview.
Right.
Thank you for the heads up, though.
I did send you an email today with details on that. So, that's the report.
Alright, anything else? I entered, entertained a motion to go to executive session to discuss litigation regarding the Hampden, Wilbraham School District and the town of Hampden. And we will adjourn without return to open session.
Chair, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Where an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body without a return to open session. Don, one eye?
Down, down, for I. Thank you.